I think I am. Good evening, welcome to the October 20th, 2014, a meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening, I'd like to call a meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a special meeting on September 22nd, a regular meeting on that same day, as well as a special meeting October 6th. You had a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any additions or corrections to those minutes as written? Seeing then, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next up, we have a recognition tonight. Rick?
So I'm gonna ask our students to come up in the audience. We've got a special recognition from a variety of students, so come on up, gang. Join me up front. Breaking away from their busy evenings. And this is just a sampling of the students who are being recognized by Northwest University out of Evanston, Illinois, for their Midwest Academic Talent Search. And these are students who score in the top standards of their grade level tests. And twenty students got involved in this nationwide qualifying ceremony, and only two percent actually made the qualifications. Among these are these Edina students. So we're gonna start out with a quick name, grade, and school that you attend, and then we're gonna ask you a couple of questions and get you back on your way.
Okay, so I'm Haley, I go to Southview, and I'm in seventh grade.
Haley, and your last name?
Utten Dorfer.
Haley Utten Dorfer, great.
I'm James Killey, I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Southview as well.
Great.
I'm Anna Matal, I go to Valley View Middle School, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Jack DeSimoni, I'm in ninth grade, and I also go to Valley View Middle School.
I'm Oliver Hui, and I'm a sophomore at Edina High School.
So Oliver, why did you, this was a voluntary activity, you didn't have to get involved in this summer, taking some more tests and doing some more work. What got you interested in doing it?
Well, because I was interested in just getting to know the ACT before I take it for sure as a junior or senior.
Great. Surprised with the results, you know, hitting that, those high numbers? What was your expectations going in?
Um, well, I was, I was kinda just hoping that I'd do okay. And I didn't wanna do great, and I didn't, I didn't wanna get like, two. But I was, I was actually really surprised when I got the reading score.
Great. And how about the test? Was it about what you thought it would be? Was it harder than you thought?
Yeah, it was like, about what I thought, and like, I did a lot of practice tests 'cause my parents made me, so...
Do you have any regrets about that?
Uh, not really, 'cause it actually helped out a lot on the test.
Okay, and how about interests going forward as you, you know, 'cause this is also kind of a career planner look, did it help you define some things you might be interested in?
Oh yeah, like, maybe into like, a math field, 'cause I scored well on the math section, so yeah.
How about for you? Interests that you're, might wanna know more about, things that you learned from the test that might be of value as you continue your planning at Southview?
Well, I know I didn't do too well on the science portion, so I think if I keep taking the test, I can keep improving my scores, so that by the time I'm ready to go to college, I'll have, you know, a pretty good score, and a pretty good idea of what I wanna do.
Okay. And, what was your experience like? Was, you're there, brand-new experience, what, what kind of feeling did you have taking the test?
Well, this was my first time taking a test, 'cause my reading teacher recommended it to me, so I was a little unsure about what it was gonna be, but the reading section, and like, the writing section were easier than I thought it would be, but the science, I didn't really know.
But you got through it?
Yeah.
So how about, things that are really fun for you at school this year, that you're probably gonna continue to build on as you look to the future?
Uh, this year, I'm really liking social studies, so I think I might, like, continue in that.
Well, our young scholars, soon-to-be future stars, we congratulate you for taking this extra effort, we hope it was worthwhile, and again, on behalf of the school district, we commend you for your outstanding work in the field of academics. Congratulations.
Next up, we have three members of the audience who've asked to speak this evening. First up is Mick O'Brien. Again, to remind folks, you are welcome to come speak at our meetings, but please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Mick O'Brien, welcome.
Yep. This is the first time I've done this, so I face you folks. My name's Mick O'Brien, I'm president of the Edina Basketball Association, and I'm here to speak in regards to our, our support, I wanna let you know our support of the Proposed Activity Center at the Edina High School. No surprise, I don't think, to anybody on the board, that, that the Basketball Association is in support of more gyms in the, in the community, and I want you to make sure to understand that we will use them. We currently are a thirty-member volunteer board, and we provide organized basketball opportunity for grades kindergarten through twelve, for students in Edina. And typically, every year, we have about thirteen hundred kids throughout K through twelve that, that play in our gyms. Our season runs from October to March, which is about the, as we know from last year, some of the worst weather that we'll see come December, January, February, so we think it's really key that we've got room for these kids to participate and do something, have some physical activity. We use every inch of the gyms that we can find, and every year, we've got coaches asking for more practice time, and there's no way we can fulfill their needs. So we're always looking for, for more time, and part of the reason we're looking for it is that we're, or that we have trouble finding it, is we're constantly competing with other activities. So it's not just basketball that's using these gyms, there's numerous other activities that are filling up the gyms for us. We just think that, that athletics in general are a big part of the educational process. I don't think you can separate the athletic, the athletics from the educational process. And I think personally, I've been coaching and being involved with the Basketball Association and football for a little bit, and baseball, and I look at what these kids have learned over the years that I've coached from the competition, and from the teamwork, and from working under pressure, you know, learning to make decisions under pressure. The time management that they have to figure out, when they have practice that night and they gotta get their studies done. We just think that, I believe that athletics as a whole is just so important to the educational process, and so whatever we can do to improve the facilities and provide a better athletic experience to go along with the educational experience, I think is, is crucial to the overall process, so just wanted to make sure you were aware of our position as the EBA. Thank you.
Thanks Mick. Patty Dronin next, welcome.
Hi, I'm Patty Dronin, I'm the mom of a ninth grader and an eleventh grader. Between me and my kids, we have participated in pretty much every kind of sport here in Edina. I also work with the Baseball Association and the Edina Athletic Booster Club, and recently worked seven weeks in the athletic office while they hired somebody new for a position there. As the administrator for the Basketball Association, one of my jobs is to schedule practices for our kids. We have thirteen hundred kids in the program, and that breaks down to about a hundred and forty teams that we're scheduling for practices twice a week. And let me tell you, every coach of every one of those teams would gladly schedule a third practice if they could. So needless to say, this isn't a, this is no small feat, scheduling these teams. We are the in-season sport, but scheduling school events and some community events are done first, which we are happy with. But those events include things like book fairs, carnivals, concerts, dances, rainout space for school teams and the marching band, elections, adult basketball. You take out holidays like Thanksgiving and Christmas, and Monday federal holidays, and there may be weeks where you can only schedule one practice if we're lucky. So, we just want to say what our support is for, as an association, for more space here in Edina, we will use it, I guarantee it, so, thank you.
Thanks Patty. Next up, Carrie Middleton, welcome Carrie.
Thank you. I'm Carrie Middleton, I'm the parent of a eighth grader and a sixth grader, both at Valley View. I'm also a member of the EBA Board, I'm a former president of, of the Board, but I'm really here as a parent more so than a member of the, of the Board. My experiences with, with traveling sports, I've seen a lot of school facilities around town, and what I've seen is a lot of state-of-the-art, multipurpose facilities, and what I think we need is a multipurpose facility, not just a basketball facility. Other organizations that would use the Activity Center that we are contemplating or include volleyball, at the very least volleyball, cheerleading, dance, gymnastics, wrestling, badminton, house league soccer, softball, in addition to basketball. So, I'm not here speaking just for a basketball facility, it is a multipurpose facility. Other districts around our community have recognized the educational benefit and the need for this type of facility, including what I view as our competitors for the kind of students and the kind of families that we hope will continue to be part of Edina for generations to come. And those include places like Wayzetta, Eden Prairie, Hopkins, Jefferson, Shakopee, Prior Lake, Waconia, Chaska, and Chanhasan. All of those places have state-of-the-art, multipurpose Activity Centers in their high schools. Edina shouldn't take a backseat to anyone when it comes to facilities. The quality of our facilities, our school facilities, is a reflection of our community. And the EBA hosts travel tournaments, two travel tournaments a year, and people from around the state and around the metro come to our gyms and our schools for these tournaments every year. And what we hear repeatedly is, surprised at how poor our gyms are and how few we have of them. And it makes me uncomfortable to know that the only impression, or at least the first impression of a lot of people around the metro of Edina is that our facilities are aging, and they're not what they used to be, and I don't think we should take a backseat to anyone when it comes to facilities. Facilities matter. I personally am a fiscal conservative, but public education is vitally important, and an Activity Center is part of that overall educational process, so that's why I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks Carrie. Thank you all. Next up, we have our financial audit presentation.
Annually, the district does do a complete financial audit, and we've been working with MMKR for many years, and welcome Bill and Margot Bach to the floor to give us an overview of the 2013-14 financial audit. Welcome.
Good evening. Is this on? Quickly before I have Bill do the report, it, just, this is the completion of the 13-14 year. It is a process we go through all year long with the audit in mind, but more importantly, throughout the summer, and wanna specifically thank Bill and his team, they spend a lot of time at our, at our office, and also the business office team, especially this year with the transition in the controller position, the, the business office stepped up to the plate and they helped get things together. Jim Gilligan worked really diligently before he left to make sure things were in place, and Scott Brown, our new controller, who's in the back of the room here, even within just a few days, was asking questions and providing feedback for the effort, for the audit, and so it really truly was a team effort. Thank you to you as a board, and for individual staff and sites, it takes all of us doing this together in order to have a successful audit, and I'm pleased to report that we are in an improved position and are within one percent of budget, both on revenue expenditures, and with that, I will give it to Bill so I don't steal any more of the, the report, so...
Thank you, Margot. Good evening Superintendent, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight regarding the district's audit for the year ended June 30, 2014. The first thing I have to do is remind you, as the body charged with governance of the district, what our role is when it comes to the audit. We are not part of your internal controls, we come in as an, an independent body, we take a look at your financial statements, we provide the opinion that goes at the front of those statements as to whether they fairly present your financial position and the results for the year under audit. In addition to that, because the district earns over half a million dollars in federal grants, you have, are subject to a separate, single audit of those federal awards expenditures. As part of both that financial statement audit and that federal single audit, we test controls and compliance, and also you are subject to a separate audit of compliance with state laws and regulations. You elect to not keep your extracurricular student activities under board control, so rather than being included in the district financial statements in your general fund, you receive a separate report on those extracurricular student activity receipts and disbursements, and with that, there's also, we look at the controls and compliance over those accounts as well. As far as the results of the audit, I'm, I'm happy to say, as Margot indicated, things went very well as far as the process was concerned, everything was ready for us as usual, it was done on time, we had no, no issues as far as the process. As far as the results, we once again were able to issue a clean or unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements, it's the highest opinion that we can give. We also issued a clean opinion on the schedule of federal awards, it is fairly stated in relation to those basic financial statements. From an internal control and compliance standpoint, we had no control or compliance findings or recommendations as far as the financial statement audit was concerned, no findings with related, related to the single audit of federal awards expenditures. We did have one issue that came up in your Minnesota Leo compliance audit, this is kind of an ongoing issue for the district. You're required to pay any claims made to the district within thirty-five days of receiving the goods or services, or the invoice for goods or services, whichever is later. Two of the forty claims that we pulled for testing were not paid within that thirty-five day limit, and this is something where those invoices typically come into your business office, get sent out to the various buildings to get approved by the people that received the goods or services, come back, and with the timing of board meetings, so on and so forth, they, they don't always get paid within that thirty-five days. This is something you're required to do, but also kind of the other side of that is the internal control, we do wanna make sure to see, see you get those approvals before you do make payments, so it's, it's kind of a, a balancing act there, but there are two of them that didn't get paid within that thirty-day time limit, or I'm sorry, thirty-five day time limit. Student activities, we issued a clean opinion on your cash receipts and disbursements, with the qualification that we only audit the recorded receipts. Since you don't have these under board control, they aren't running through your business office, they're out at the school buildings, being controlled by students, they don't have the same controls, obviously, that the receipts coming through your business office, I'm so sure that we're, we're getting all the receipts that are out there. We do mention that as, as far as a control exception also, there were no compliance findings this year in your student activity reports. One other thing to follow up on, in the previous year's audit, we noted that you had opened a new account where you were making electronic payments or claims, and we kinda took a broader look at the various methods of electronic claim payments that the district was using. And this is kind of an area where state statute hasn't really kept up with technology, despite the fact that you have a number of different areas, credit cards, electronic claims payments, where you're not using paper anymore. You're required to have a signed claim declaration that any claim you're paying is just and correct, and no part of it has been paid before. So a lot of our districts are kinda struggling with how to obtain those signed declarations in cases where you're using electronic payments. In particular, the account you opened last year was kind of a new thing where you were using a one-time code that was given to the vendor, the payment was put out there for them, and they came online with the bank to claim it. You have taken a look at the various electronic payment methods you're using, implemented some changes, for instance, on that particular account now, when they come on to enter their code and claim their payment, that declaration that that claim is just and correct and has not been paid before comes up on that screen, and they are in effect signing that electronically, so you've come up with ways to kinda get that taken care of from an electronic standpoint instead of having that, that signed piece of paper. Turning to some of the financial information from the audit, this is a graph that we have in our management report that provides a little bit of a benchmark for where your unreserved fund balance is from year to year compared to other districts statewide. It's kind of a different calculation, it's based on the state calculation for statutory operating debt, so it only includes unrestricted expenditures, it doesn't include your other general fund expenditures and your operating capital and, and health and safety and some of those restricted buckets, so this percent's a little higher than, when we calculate it, we use your total fund expenditures, but this is one, one ratio where we have some statewide benchmark data to compare you, so. At the end of 2014, based on this calculation, you had about eighteen point three percent of your general fund expenditures in your ending fund balance, compared to the previous year, you were at about seventeen point four percent, so your, your ratio went up about one percent. 2013 statewide, that same ratio was at about twenty-two percent. And you can see from the graph here, the blue bar being your district, you've been consistently somewhat lower than the statewide average, and that's nothing good or bad, it's just kind of a management decision, the kind of safety net of, of financial fund balance there that you've decided to keep from your budget process, and, you know, we're seeing a nice, steady growth there from year to year to year, no big swings, so from an audit standpoint, that's the kind of trend that we like to see. This graph shows one of the main reasons why districts statewide, and your district in particular, was maintaining more fund balance in recent years. Again, those yellow bars show your unrestricted fund balance over the last ten years, and the blue shows your cash and investments at the end of those same fiscal years. And again, you see the, the nice, steady climb in the fund balance, and by comparison, the blue bars had quite a bit more variance, and this is really due to the state's legislature, some of the things that they did with school district financing to balance the state budget. You can see in 2009, that relationship between cash and unrestricted fund balance had, had been fairly steady, and all of a sudden, over the next three years, there, that relationship changed dramatically, where your cash was going down, that's where the state was using the tax shift, and also changing the metering of state aids, basically paying you a smaller percentage of the state aid you're entitled to before June 30th, and increasing the amount they hold back and pay you after year-end to increase the state's cash flow during those same periods. So from a, an accrual standpoint, you were earning the same amount of aid, you were earning the same amount of total revenue, but they were essentially borrowing cash flow from the district. And that kind of peaked back in 2012, where at, at one point, they were withholding forty percent of the state aid due to the districts, and paying that out after year-end, and your tax shift was up to almost fifty percent of your annual tax levy, excluding debt service levies. Over the last two years, your cash position has really improved, it's, with the state's financial position, they've been able to pay back some of that cash flow borrowing. In 2013, they changed that state aid metering up, brought it close to the ninety-ten ratio that it's supposed to be at by law. They were paying you about eighty-six percent of your state aids at the end of the previous fiscal year. In 2014, they did restore that to the full ninety percent, and also toward the end of the year, they paid that tax shift back, other than there's a, a small piece of your referendum that's frozen in, in statute, but everything else they paid back, which to your district meant about twelve and a half million dollars of cash that they'd essentially borrowed to you, got paid back at the end of 2014. So you can see how that kind of restored that relationship again between cash and fund balance. In fact, prior to the state paying some of that cash back all the way through March of 2013, you were having to do short-term tax anticipation borrowing, I was at about fifteen million dollars to be able to make your, meet your daily cash flow needs because of that tax shift and state aid metering that, that the state was playing with there. This table shows the change in your general fund, fund balances, and the different pieces of that fund balance. In total, your fund balance at the end of the year is about fifteen point six million, the unassigned was about eight point six million, which represented roughly nine and a half percent of your total general fund expenditures. Those bottom three categories, committed, assigned, and unassigned are all part of what make up unrestricted fund balance, which was about that fourteen and a half million dollars I mentioned before. That represented about sixteen percent of your total general fund expenditures. Then the other two categories, nonspendables essentially represents the amount you have in prepaid expenditures, where you've essentially spent those dollars for something and can't spend them again, it still represents an asset. And then restricted fund balance are the amounts that are in those state legislated restricted buckets within the general fund.
Kathy?
One thing that is, is fairly unique about your district is you really benefit from open enrollment. You open enroll about twelve hundred and forty-two kids in, in 2014, or pupil units from students coming into Edina from other districts, whereas you only lost about ninety of your public school kids in Edina that are open enrolled to other districts, so you had a net gain there of about eleven hundred and fifty students, and that's been pretty typical for your district.
Can we just clarify, Margot, since we spoke about that a little bit at Facilities and Finance, it may be confusing to some people that Bill is just counting people going to other public school districts, but the general open enrollment is more or less the same number of people who are going to other schools, including parochial schools and...
Sure. The data that we're able to pull and compare from the state is only the public schools, but we know from a residential standpoint, the number of students we're open-rolling about the same amount as the number of our resident students going to other schools, to include other public schools like charters, but also private schools, which we don't have that data for. So that's about a net equal, and, but this is reflective only of public schools.
Thank you.
This graph shows your general fund revenue in, in kind of broad strokes for the 2014 year compared to budget, and also compared to the prior year. The general fund took in about ninety-one point eight million dollars in 2014, you're about one percent higher than budget. Most of that variance came in two areas, your state aids were about eight hundred and ninety thousand over budget, primarily in special education aid and a few other state aids. Your other revenues, which is gifts, bequests, interest, rent, kinda miscellaneous local revenues, were about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over budget, and that's, that's an area where a lot of that is unpredictable revenues, where you budget fairly conservatively. Revenues in total were about one point nine million dollars, less than the prior year. The big change that you see from year to year between property taxes and state sources there, between the green and yellow bars, represents that tax shift change, which was twelve point million dollars, switching from property taxes to state aids, that's revenue neutral, it didn't change the total revenue, you got, it just changed how it came in to the general fund. But you did make another change within the general fund that impacted your total revenue. 2013 was the first year of your capital project levy that you're using for technology. The first year, you had accounted for that in the general fund, you had about three point eight million dollars of revenues and expenditures that went through the general fund. In 2014, you changed where you're accounting for that money, it's now going through your building construction fund. Due to some of the quirks in the, the UFRS chart of accounts, you have a Due to some of the quirks in the, the UFRS chart of accounts, you have a little more flexibility if you account for it in the building construction fund than they do, than you do in the general fund, so that's where the district is going to be doing it for the remainder of that, of that levy. But if you take that three point eight million dollars out, the rest of your revenues actually went up about one point nine million from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen. Most of that was an additional state aid, about one point seven million. Most of that was general education aid, you earned about one point two million more in general education aid in two thousand fourteen than the previous year. Part of that is due to an increase in the number of students that you served and also you had a seventy-eight dollar per pupil unit increase in the general education formula for two thousand fourteen. Also, special education revenue is about half a million dollars higher than the previous year. On the expenditure side, you spent just under ninety-one million dollars in total in the general fund. You were about eight tenths of a percent under budget, roughly six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in total across the fund. Salaries were actually a little higher than budget, about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in total. Most of that was due to a larger amount, number of severance payouts than you had, had projected in your budget. Other areas where you were under budget were mainly supplies, about six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars under budget and capital, about five hundred thousand under budget. And that was due to a number of things, including grant allocation spending for supplies, capital project savings on the capital side, and both of those are, are things that impact your site carryovers. So if the sites weren't spending all of their allocations, that remains in your, in your fund balance for future use. Expenditures were one point nine million dollars under the prior year in total. Again, the other side of, of the change you made in that capital technology levy, if you take that three point eight million out, your remaining expenditures went up by about one point nine million dollars and the largest part of that was salaries and benefits, which were about seven hundred and fifty thousand higher, mainly just due to your typical contractual increases, inflation in, in the benefits and things of that nature. Then briefly, your other operating funds are shown here, the fund balances for the last five years for your food service special revenue fund and your community service special revenue fund. The food service fund ended the year with a fund balance of six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That represents about nineteen percent of your annual expenditures in this fund, which are roughly three point two million dollars. Fund balance went up about eighty-eight thousand from the year before, you'd actually budgeted to spend fund balance down slightly, so you ended up about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars higher in ending fund balance than had been projected in your budget. Actually, both revenues and expenditures were below budget. You lost about five days of school last year due to weather-related school closing. So your food service revenues were about ninety-seven thousand under budget and the expenses were about two hundred and eight thousand dollars under budget, mainly in the food and, and supplies. And the community service fund ended the year with a fund balance of about one point two million, that represents roughly fifteen percent of your annual expenditures in that fund, which were about seven point eight million dollars for two thousand fourteen. Fund balance in this fund went up about twenty-seven thousand, very close to budget. You were about six thousand dollars under the projected ending budget, or projected ending, ending fund balance per your budget. So again, very, very close to what you had budgeted there. So that was everything I'd intended to go over from a financial standpoint. Are there questions, anything you wanted me to go into further?
Questions?
Just to make the public aware that Bill and his team did meet with the Financial Facility Committee of the Board earlier this month into the detail and had a lot of discussion about, just getting some clarification that related to the audit.
Any, any additional things you learned or suggestions you have for the district going forward?
I, I thought that overall, as we have experienced out here in the past, that things are very well-run. We audited some different grants this year in the single audit that we haven't done in a number of years, your Title I programs, which was new this year. That's usually a place where we'll find compliance issues, grants that haven't been audited maybe ten years and I'm happy to say everything was, was very clean and, you know, done real well. We did have a couple of housekeeping things from an accounting standpoint that we recommended in our management letter as far as some of the transactions that we noted were being have netted, where expenditures were being recorded against related revenue account or vice versa, and we recommended that you take a look at that from the standpoint of accounting standards, they should be generally reported gross unless it's something that truly overstates.
Those primarily are two of those.
Right. So other than that though, no, I thought it went very well.
Excellent. Additional questions? Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Margot, and your team for all of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're off to enrollment projections.
Annually, annually, the administration does do projections on our enrollment and how that ties into facility planning, obviously we're in the middle of major facility planning. Margot and Mary Mandelfield are our key administrators who do the projection work and accumulate all the data and it's the October meeting where we ask them to give us a report in and welcome them tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for us to present about enrollment projections, the average daily membership class size and facilities. As you look, the change in enrollment from fall of two thousand thirteen to fall of two thousand fourteen, we saw a slight increase at our elementary, a small increase at our middle and a, and a little larger increase at the high school. At elementary, we did move to all day kindergarten and the difference between last year and this year was one student. So last year we had five hundred and seventy-four students in all day kindergarten, this year we had, or last year we had five seventy-three, this year five seventy-four. Otherwise, there were some changes in some grades, first grade was a little bit higher, third grade was a little smaller. Middle school, sixth grade had fourteen more students than last year. I think the big difference in the high school, in tenth grade, we had twenty more tenth graders this year than we had last year. We had twenty-two less juniors and then we had forty-two more in, in twelfth grade. And that really is a, a sign of the class of twenty fifteen has been our largest class coming through the system. So since early elementary school, twenty fifteen has been our largest class and they have now become seniors, there are six hundred and ninety-two seniors in that class. The next piece and, and this might also address the question Board Member Goldstein had, is our non-resident students. Non-resident students are any students who do not live in the Edina School District boundaries. They could be living in the city of Edina, but not in the Edina School District boundaries. As you can see, we increased our open enrolled students by ninety-three from last year. So that thirteen hundred and thirty-two students represents fifteen point seven of our open enrolled students. Last year, just under fifteen percent of our students were open enrolled. We have thirty districts, students attending from thirty different districts. Minneapolis, Hopkins, Richfield, St. Louis Park, Bloomington and Eden Prairie account for eighty-nine percent of our students attending Edina through open enrollment. We have approximately fourteen hundred and twenty students that are Edina residents that are attending elsewhere. Of those, twelve hundred and thirty are attending non-public schools and additional one hundred and ninety are attending other public or charter schools. The hundred and ninety that are attending other public or charter schools are a decrease from last year by about fifty students. When you look at our five-year enrollment projection, both with resident growth and non-resident growth, you can see that we have, we're anticipating very little growth over the next five years. It's very, very, very small numbers. And then elementary projection by building, I think this is, can be very difficult to project out. Choice programs can affect these numbers depending on the neighborhood the students are coming from and just for members of the audience, of our six elementary schools, Normandale French immersion is a total choice program, so it does not matter where you live in the city of Edina, you can apply to and attend that program, there is not any set attendance boundaries. Both Countryside Elementary and Highlands have a continuous progress program and those are again district-wide programs, so you can apply from any attendance boundary in Edina to attend those programs. I'd like to point out that this year Creek Valley is twenty-two students below the projection we expected. Cornelia is forty-six students above projection. Now, last year, Cornelia was twenty-six students below projection. I would also like to just mention at Cornelia, they have kindergarten classes that are at twenty-four and twenty-five. Well, in the past, we've had kindergarten classes at twenty-four. This year with all day, we have some buildings that have smaller. We did give additional para-staffing to accommodate the, the size of kindergarten classes, but just kind of as a, a point of clarification there, we were projected to have seventy-one residents in kindergarten at Cornelia. The night we did kindergarten roundup, we had sixty students register. We placed them open enrolled students and between June and August, between June first and August twenty-fifth, we had thirteen additional residents enroll in kindergarten. Looking back at the last six years, we've had anywhere from seventy-nine to ninety in a kindergarten cohort at Cornelia, so there wasn't anything that would have led us to believe we'd have a, that kind of bubble. And the rest of the building, so Cornelia is below projection or below the build, district average in first grade or in third grade and fifth grade, slightly below in second and at the district average in first and fourth. So it's really the kindergarten number there that seems to be a little bit higher and is, and is affecting their numbers. But as you look out over a five-year, a five-year period, their numbers look to be quite large.
Do we have room in Cornelia and Highlands for that growth going out over those years?
That may depend on some of our facility discussions and the other part of my answer will be a caution, but as Mary stated earlier, on the individual school projections for a couple of reasons. One, when we do the overall enrollment projections, we use five, five, six years worth of history and a variety of projection models. When we go by individual elementary schools, it's really just looking at the previous year and the relationship and moving it forward by building. And for, when we have an immersion school and two continuous progress schools, I have to go in and manipulate some of that to force those schools to work. And then, and when you have major changes in a building like Cornelia where this year they had higher than projection, but as Mary stated, the previous year they were lower than projection, so it's going a little bit like this. The accuracy in the third and fourth and fifth year out is just, it, it's difficult to do by building. So I, I think it's something we need to monitor because I, I think that's certainly a concern and a, a question, you know, a question that we need to watch on an annual basis and also incorporate into our facilities discussions. But what I'm trying to say is, it's very speculative out to the fifth year.
And then finally, we have the secondary projections by building and, and as you can see, this slide indicates, there'll be a slight increase, right, right now we're anticipating a slight increase at every secondary building.
So Mary reported on the enrollment and then we take the enrollment, basically which is a, a physical count of the number of students that we have and convert that to what's called average daily membership, which is if we have a student move in, in the middle of the year, we get a point five or half credit for them and, and it's taking into account all that migration in and out of the number of students that we have and converting it to an average daily membership projection, which is what we are funded on. When we start planning for the budget process, actually for this year, we started last December, December, January, we use the projection, average daily membership projections from January to drive our budget allocations, our staffing, our supplies and that kind of thing, at that time with the information we have, based on the enrollment we know at that time, then we convert it to average daily membership. So what this chart does is compare what the preliminary fourteen, fifteen budget was based on and now what we know today based on October first enrollment. And then converts it into pupil units, which is how we are paid. And now, the pupil units have gotten easier, they're all one point oh except for grades seven through twelve is now, now weighted at one point two. There used to be a, a variety of combinations, awaiting factors the state used. So results are, we are down from projections from what we used in planning the budget. In terms of pupil units, that, it's about fifty-nine, that results in about roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reduced revenue. So I'm happy to report that we had a good audit report in the previous agenda item because now this is just a little bit lower, so that, that's certainly going to help us as we move forward into the final budget for fourteen, fifteen. This is one factor in the budget. What we will do now in the final budget update process, which we are in the process right now, is monitor November first enrollment and also look at updated staffing, revenue projections, all those kinds of things to bring the final budget to you in December that will incorporate this information. Rick, did you have something?
No, that's good.
This year, we're using a merged enrollment projection, it really come, there's about seventeen different calculations in the way you can project the enrollment in this software. The merged projection combines about five of those options, it seemed to reflect most accurately where we're going to be at. In looking at, I also used the resident calculation and compared it to our most recent demographic study to see which, which models could get us as close as possible to that and then, and project it forward for average daily membership. Then for the secondary schools, did a capacity calculation with some varying options here, looking at the projected number of students. Now, this is students, I've converted back from average daily membership to students. And because we are talking about facilities, did not do the same thing for elementary, back to your question, Lenny. The difference, the functional capacity is at eighty-five percent for all the schools, that's just kind of a baseline. Then if we took the maximum of seven out of eight periods for the middle, middle school, which they're currently on a six out of eight period, and then also maximum capacity of literally a hundred percent, which is almost impossible to schedule schools into a hundred percent. You can see with the current students and the projections out five years where we're at, and basically, you know, we are, we are tight, we're, we're right there. So any major fluctuations, you know, we'll, we'll change those if you look at any one of these schools in the bottom third of the chart and look at the difference for the functional capacity is the one I would look at. This information is being looked at also as part of the data that was presented in the Facility Advisory Task Force and certainly any results coming out of our task force work and potential bond referendum work will impact the building's capacity and the future of, of what these charts will look like. Question?
A quick question, because I know you do, you go through then Valley View and the high school as well in these slides. Am I correct in assuming that when you did this, you are assuming the ninth graders are still in Valley View and in South View and you haven't projected forward based on the resolution saying we're in some way or shape or form moving the ninth graders to the high school?
The ninth graders are still in the middle school because this is based on October one right now and that is where they are.
But, but we are projecting out for another five years. But when you're projecting out those five years, you're projecting out with those, the ninth graders staying in the, in the middle school buildings?
Yes, at this time.
And then finally, our summary statements. Elementary school enrollment is projected to increase by a hundred students during the next five years. Again, we have some control over that with open enrollment. Secondary enrollment is projected to increase by seventy-seven students during the next five years. That projected increase might impact open enrollment space. K-12 total enrollment is projected to increase by two hundred of students or one point six percent during the five-year period. And finally, the administration recognizes the project, a projection model, district-wide programming studies. And finally, the administration recognizes the projection model, district-wide programming studies and building capacity may need to be revised to be responsive to changing community demographics and educational trends. The model must be flexible with ongoing monitoring.
Mary, in your assumptions, are you keeping open enrollment students constant?
So the projections that have been laid out here, that has, the open enroll numbers have remained consistent.
Okay. And what's a resident tuition student on the average daily membership projection slide?
Those are our resident students that attend elsewhere typically, not always, but the majority would be special ed student, where we receive the student, the state aid for them because we are paying where they are attending for them to attend.
Okay.
You know, I would, just one other piece I'd add is that we did not have, so when you go back to that average weighted daily membership, you'd see a decrease in the middle school. We went through the entire waitlist in grades seven, eight, and nine. So we didn't have anybody on the waiting list. I think one of the challenges always can be is when you offer the spot and if students, do you offer that right at February 15th and then you don't know? Ninth grade for us can be a big transition year. We have families that sometimes choose to leave going into 10th grade or actually, I'm sorry, going from eighth grade into ninth grade. So, but this year, we offered everybody spots in ninth grade. Some were a little bit later and that could have also impacted the number of students we have as far as total average weighted daily membership.
And would that have made a difference at Cornelia this year if we had chosen a different time to offer those?
So I would go back to, I think the interesting piece with Cornelia is the resident projection was 71 kindergarteners. The night of, or the night of roundup, January 30th approximately, we had 60 show up. Well, that was barely enough. That would be enough for three classrooms. So offered some, offered spots and families chose to accept those spots. And then now, once they do, we're really not in a position to say, oops, we've got too many kids here now at Cornelia. Can we place you at another school unless they'd be willing? So when the 12 residents moved in, it just increased their numbers. So that, again, you know, when I look at past data, there was just nothing that would have indicated those numbers would have been that high in kindergarten at Cornelia based on the last six years.
So when we offer an open enrollment spot, we tell them the school at that time? Is that, and is that in our policy that we do that? Is something, I'm just trying to, I know that the families in kindergarten right now are very upset about what's going on at Cornelia, that it's very tight. And so how do we fix this so it doesn't happen? So we don't have these accidental bubble years in the future?
Yeah, so once we offer them a spot in a particular building, and we really do need to offer them a spot. We can't say to a family, well, we're going to wait until August to see where we might have room. So we offer them a spot and then they become our student. And so just as if we had those residents moving into that attendance area, we can't really do anything to change that. And they are 24 and 225s and quite honestly, all of our full-day kindergartens prior to this year, they were at 24. We had 24 students in every full-day class. That's how we staffed them. It was the half-day that had been smaller. It just happens that this year, Cornelia has kindergarten classes that are at the 24 where other buildings aren't quite that high.
Can you explain again why we can't tell them, why do we have to tell them what school they go to? That's what I'm trying to understand. We can say, we have room for you somewhere in our district. Why do we have to tell them a specific school? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, at some point, you have to do, you have to allow them to register. So as you're creating class lists, you have to allow them to register. And families aren't going to, families wouldn't accept a spot if you said, well, it could be Highlands, it could be Countryside, it could be Creek. They're creating class lists and so, you know, that is, and it's not, I mean, that's pretty much the way it's done. It's same thing at Valley View and South View. You know, we offer them a spot at Valley View. Maybe we find then there's a little more room at South View, but at that point, the family's committed to Valley View. Not a good answer, but that is, that's the way we've operated.
I think I would, I'm trying to balance both. The families who have residents here now are in what was a 26 class at some point is a lot for kindergarten. And just putting another adult para doesn't make the size of the classroom larger. Those walls don't move and so it's crowded. And so I'm, I'm trying to balance both sides. We want people to, we want to welcome everyone here, but we want the classroom they come to to be welcoming. And 26 in a classroom with two adults and all those desks isn't really welcoming. So I, I'm just wondering if that's a decision we should consider again is to, how that offer is made and when it's made.
We can talk about this as we plan for the upcoming 15, 16 school year.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of vari, we will take a look at it, but the variables of choice is the other thing. You know, that we don't know where choice programs, know what people are going to choose and take. And so then if there is an opening, then they opt for that choice program too. So the variables get, where we do run into classes on occasion out of all the students we place. And we try to avoid it and Mary does a great job of managing it. So we'll continue to monitor. But again, we're going to have, you know, we have probably maybe three grade levels, Mary, at different schools where we are trying to manage numbers that, out of, out of all the grade levels with three choice programs, that's where we're at right now.
I think, Lisa, to your point, so in the past, so when we accept students, we can't ask nor would we if they are on an IEP. So if we would happen to get a student who needed to be placed in one of our center-based programs that felt like that was that capacity, we would have to place, we have to place that child there. So in the past, we've done some things where we've offered a spot at a certain building and because of the students' needs, the placement was at another building. And so we, and I've talked to people at the Minnesota Department of Education about this. The response to me is you have to treat them like they were a resident that moved in. But again, we will take this into consideration as we look at the 15, 16 open enrollment process.
One more question, looking at these projections for elementary. Both Cornelia and Highlands are seeing some meaningful growth. I understand Cornelia with all the development going on in that area. But with Highlands, what's, what is going on there? Are we expanding classrooms or any idea what's happening?
There is nothing in the calculation to expand classrooms. It's the uniqueness of isolating the elementaries only and then going by individual school and then making sure that the immersion school stays almost flat and how it then plays with the other school and then the continuous progress in the other two schools. And Highlands is one of those schools. So it is how it projects forward. That surprised me a little bit too because I don't think we've seen that in the past in the Highlands area. And again, it's only looking at the last year for those elementaries.
And I think Normandale has to, Normandale French version has to stay flat. When we lose students in second, third, fourth grade, the only way fifth grade we can place them is through open enrollment. So their, their open enrollment numbers essentially are coming in. We've got a, we've in the past few years had a long waiting list of residents trying to get in. So any open enrollment students typically now are being placed at the, at the later end. And sometimes we, we don't have families who are French speakers who we can enroll in fourth and fifth grade. So those numbers will stay absolutely flat, if not flat, even, even decrease quite a bit. They're staffed at 27 to one with the exception of kindergarten, four classrooms per grade.
Additional questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to our next-gen facilities plan.
Susan Brott led the Facility Advisory Task Force, completed its work in the end of September. From there, we moved through a kind of a phase one. We're now taking a look at our next steps in the planning process. I asked students to start us off. There's a variety of other administrators here tonight that will probably be adding insights and input as well as board members as we look at the next phase of our facility planning efforts. So we welcome Susan tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Dressen and school board members. As Superintendent Dressen said, we are just trying to move forward now since the report from the Facilities Advisory Task Force that was given to you on October 6th. They've completed their charge and now we are looking at ways to continue to align kind of our, as you've heard, some of our aging facilities, but our facilities in general with some of our next-generation strategies and our vision for what we want our learners to leave our district with. So just a little bit recap a little bit. So some of the research that has gone into the planning thus far, recall going back to, actually, I could go back prior to this, is to previous bond referendums that we've had in 2003. We had a large referendum that upgraded several of our facilities to include lots of fine arts performance spaces and some pools at South View as well as some athletics or just classroom spaces in general. But now we're coming up on another 10 years of that. In 2010, there was an athletic fields study that was conducted and some general, some recommendations were made identifying significant field improvements that were needed as well as possibility of doing an athletic dome or something. And now, as you know, within the last year, the city has developed a dome outside of Braemar and looking at, that accommodates some of those needs. So that's not necessarily a high priority for the district anymore, but we still have some athletic fields needs that certainly came out through some of our discussions over the last several weeks. We did have a Facilities Advisory Committee, which is a little bit different than the task force that you know that was conducted a couple of years ago. Several members of that committee were part of the task force this most recent time. That group did start to look at some of the facility's needs. It was suspended because quite a bit of that was sort of based on where the programming of our secondary study, our birth to grade five study went. Nonetheless, they did work very hard to develop some standards for some of our facilities, especially in terms of internal standards, and worked hard on our deferred maintenance planning. Since that time, the district, as you know, has gathered a lot of additional data with the demographic study, which was conducted last year. We did a community survey in May and June, which identified some community approvals and tolerance for different facility improvements. We've done a significant facilities assessment in cooperation with our district architect and engineers going through each building that we have, meeting with staff and administration in each building, talking about what kind of wish lists do you have, what challenges do you have, and then some preliminary financial data that we collected. Then, as you know, again, on the 6th, we reported out the Facilities Task Force and then you also approved kind of a framework for us to move forward. So tonight, I'm going to move into what we're calling Phase Two. So some preliminary bond referendum proposal. As we said, that at the 6th, we were working on a timeline to try to come back with you with a formal recommendation. I'll talk to you a little bit about how we've tweaked that, how we've tweaked the timeline and then also some referendum financing updates that we've had. So the proposal that we're bringing forward to you at this time, and again, it's not a formal recommendation in the form of a voter question or anything. We just want to keep the discussion going because we know that there's a lot of details that need to be worked out. After the Facilities Task Force discussion, I'll report on the 6th. We had a very good discussion with the administration and board on next steps. So we're, we've sort of categorized our proposal into three main categories. So the first is really that, that primary focus to enhance next-generation learning spaces. Creating flexible spaces. We have very traditional classrooms, as you know, are, as we've talked a lot about with our architects, the double-loaded corridor kind of thing where you've just got cells and bells model. But looking to try to provide some variety of different spaces. We know that sometimes you need that traditional classroom space. Sometimes you need more small group, individual space, you need large group space. So trying to create more flexible spaces at all of our schools and all of our levels to include early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school. Just a little bit of detail on that. At the early childhood level, we are recommending to allocate some resources. We know that a lot of that is going to be driven by the programming decisions that are being made and studied, while they're being studied, and then we'll make some recommendations in the spring based on our birth to grade five study. But we do know that we're at a little bit of a capacity with our current early childhood programming. So just trying to see what sorts of needs we're going to have there, knowing that both the state and the national discussions that we're having around early childhood and we're digging up a little bit more data on that. But we are saying that we should probably be looking at some sort of allocation for that somewhere in that $2 to $4 million range or so. At the elementary level, the Facilities Advisory Task Force certainly recommended some recommendations for those flexible spaces for individual, small, and large group. Also wanting to make sure that we had some adaptable furniture in those spaces that aligned with that and also looking at some other improvements. One of the key discussions I think that we had with you, and I think we heard through the task force as well, was that perhaps we needed to look at some additional improvements at the elementary level. And so we are looking at doing that to include some more equitable spaces between our elementary schools. Some of them, especially when you look at the large group space, could be considered a gymnasium, but for other large group learning spaces, we are perhaps not as equal between all of our schools. And we want to be looking at creating a little bit more equity there. So probably around, and these are ballpark figures because we don't know for sure, somewhere around that $25 million range to 27 or something like that, which is an increase from the original proposal from the task force, but that was based on the parameters that we gave them. So it's not faulting them, it's just within the parameters that we gave them. But responding to the conversations that we heard from you. And then at the middle school level, continuing with the recommendations of the Facilities Advisory Task Force, which we're looking at basically remodeling some of the spaces that we already have articulated for, currently for ninth grade. And so when we do make that move for the ninth grade over to the high school, how do we fill those spaces? As you heard, our middle schools are pretty tight. And so being able to create some more flexibility at all, at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, we also are looking at ways to re-envision the media center so that it's not just a place to house books. We know that there is going to be a need for that, but perhaps with other digital learning and collaboration type of learning spaces that we need, we could reconfigure how that space looks. We're not saying abandoning books, but we're just repurposing some of that space a little bit. So at the middle school, really looking at how do we repurpose some of those currently ninth-grade houses and trying to create a more comprehensive middle school experience? We've had a lot of discussions with middle school, and I know that's part of their ongoing study this year, is how do you create a true middle school experience? Maybe some interdisciplinary teaming that can happen sixth through eighth grade. Then at the high school, we are looking, and again, the middle school was around that $25 million mark as well. The high school would be looking at a little bit more, around the $35 million, partly because we know that we're going to need to add some additional spaces to accommodate ninth grade. We don't want them to necessarily be just more traditional classrooms. We want them to be flexible. When we look at the number of students coming over, we need spaces to accommodate approximately 30, 30 learning spaces. It's hard to envision what they might look like when you talk about teaching, but we are looking at ways to improve those in terms of flexibility. So again, that's our primary focus. Obviously, the big chunk of our, of our recommendation would be to look at enhancing next-generation learning spaces and really trying to update our classroom and learning and instructional spaces from that traditional model of the 1950s to something that's maybe a little bit more 2020. We are, we heard some conversation this morning from some representatives of our community about an activity center. The activity center discussion that we had at the Facilities Advisory Task Force was a spirited discussion, as you know. But we are, we do recognize that there's some additional curricular needs that we need to have with additional students coming over with ninth grade. But then also, we are limited in some of our curricular spaces as well when it comes to physical education and health. And knowing that there is a curriculum review, I believe, going on this year for physical education. Just what does that mean? What's kind of the next generation of physical education? Is it just the traditional model or are we looking at different kinds of fitness and wellness improvement? And then also health curriculum as well. We know that there's some co-curricular needs. We obviously know that there's some athletic space needs, as we've heard a lot tonight. But we know that there's also some other co-curricular needs. We have a very well-recognized robotics team that goes nationally and they're kind of using a variety of different spaces creatively. But I think that they would appreciate some more open, large spaces. And then we have some other sorts of fitness expansions that we could be doing. And then there's a lot of before and after-school large spaces that, or activity space that could be used with that activity center. And one of the key elements of that activity center is that it would free up after-school space at the middle schools. Currently, our gyms at the middle schools are predominantly occupied by our athletic teams after school, which limits any sort of activities and after-school activities that might happen for those middle school students that aren't part of those athletic, athletic teams. So it would free up some of the spaces that are currently at the middle school. And I do want to note that this is sort of a scaled-back version from what was originally presented. That was based on recommendations we heard from you as well as some members of the Facilities Advisory Task Force. So this would be looking at, our estimates are based on a, they call it a three plus one, I think, if I remember. I think, if I remember that correctly, essentially, three courts plus an additional court, but that could be kind of a, more of a modified large group space as well, and not necessarily just four basketball courts, as we heard tonight, a lot of different activities using that. And the last section of our proposal would be to invest in district infrastructure. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussions in this community over the last several years about safety and security enhancements. We know that our buildings were built for a different time and a different approach for safety and security, so we would be looking at our first priority, it's going to be a phased-in approach, but the first priority would be focusing on how do we make sure that everybody essentially enters through an office? There's a one point of access. Right now, you come into some of our buildings, and while there might be one door that's open, it's kind of a wide-open space when you walk in there, and so we want to create a more controlled access point. And then, the other safety and security enhancements would be coming too, in terms of some lone zone lockdown kinds of opportunities with technologies, some what we might call a panic button, they call it duress options in the industry. So, we'd be looking at improvements for those, for sure. We also know that we have some athletic field and space improvements, as was identified in the 2010 study, and as you see now with a lot of our athletic fields, they are well-used, perhaps even overused, and know that we need to make some improvements with some of those. And we'd be looking at some improved access to parking at the West Campus with the middle school and the high school there, and developing an alternative transportation services facility. We do know that that is an ongoing discussion with the city of Edina and their desire for our space, but we also are looking at it not just as that. I think more importantly, we're looking at it that we have a need for a different transportation space. We have some space crunches for some of our buses, not all of them are even able to park over there, and some security improvements that we would like to make in terms of securing those buses, so. So, that would be our overall recommendation, not a lot of significant improvements from what was presented to you from the task force, just modifications and updates based on the discussions that we heard. I think we'd like to talk a little bit about financing for some of that. If you added all that up, it's still around that $125 million range total package. We do know that the original survey that was conducted did find some community support for a building referendum in that $120, $125 million range, so we tried to still stay within that. The initial finance assessment to include a preliminary tax impact for the purposes of surveying people, because you needed to have some number to go on, has been updated a little bit based on actions that we now know what our final levy is, other changes that might have happened to our financing and what potential tax impact could be. So, we continue to have conversations with our financial advisors. I don't know if Margot Bach has additional thoughts on financing that she'd like to add?
At this point, we're continuing to work with the financial advisors to discuss the tax impact in terms of levy options, what are the current market rates, what are current interest rates, all those kinds of things, and we'll have Joel Sutter come back to either finance committee or a board work session to review, because as you know, we've had him at meetings before, that is a meeting, or a good chunk of an agenda in and of itself.
So, we do want to recognize the impact that any sort of improvements would have on our property owners, but we also want to make sure that we're keeping our investment in those properties high as well. And I think the biggest change, from what you've probably seen earlier, is that we are recommending as administration a more prolonged timeline. Originally, we were talking about potentially looking to go out to voters in March, which would have meant bringing you a formal proposal today, have some discussion, perhaps, and then you would need to act on that formal proposal in November. And as we started looking at financing options, as we looked at some of these recommendations that we've been talking about, do require some ongoing discussions with other partners, whether it's the city, or watershed district, or, you know, potentially private fundraisers. We feel that there's some more discussions that need to continue, and so we wanted to extend out this timeline a little bit, and yet, it's not that far away, so we need to keep moving on it with our discussions. So, today, we're providing you with some preliminary recommendations, not heavily detailed because we want to keep the conversation going. In November's meeting, we'd look to have some continued board discussion with you, as well as in December, somewhere in that November, December timeframe, we'd be looking to perhaps get some community input on some of those proposals as well. And then, that your first meeting in January, we'd be looking at an action on that referendum proposal, if not earlier, but we thought we'd put it out to January, just recognizing that the holidays sometimes delay some decisions and let you focus on that. But that would still allow us time then to perhaps go out in early May, one of those first couple of weeks of May, we don't have absolute deadline date on those, but put them around May 5th or 12th or so, to look at a special election, that would be the bond referendum. So, that was it. So, that is our preliminary recommendation at this point, just wanted to make sure that we're acknowledging the discussions that we've had with you to this, to include the task force work that they worked very hard to put together and the discussions that we've been having with you, and I think later in the meeting, we have a discussion time for that, or now, or I'll look to you for...
I'm going to open that up for now. Questions? Lenny?
A couple of questions. As we go through the discussion phase of this, it'd be handy to see a little bit more detail of what we expect to accomplish in each school. I know that we've got a little bit of samples, but just kind of as a percentage, say, of the classrooms that are touched in the middle school and in the elementary school. In that same light, you talked about increasing dollars at the elementary school to create more equitable space. I was hoping that we could take a look again at dollars in terms of what programming needs there might be. So, for example, if the dollars in the elementary school are touching 15% of the classrooms, should we be looking to see to touch 25 or 30%? Again, based upon programming needs. That same light, you know, we've got the birth to grade five study, want to make, you know, kind of circle back, make sure we're incorporating any of the birth to grade five study ideas, recommendations. So, there's sort of some questions on the elementary, middle school, high school. On the activity center, I think that what we need to do is some sort of a space study that says, here's our utilization of the gyms, and if we add one more, what is our utilization? If we add two more, what is our utilization? I know that one of the things we listed there was that, you know, we have to accommodate ninth grade PE, but for example, if this facility is done in three years, what will PE look like in the high school? What's our prediction as to what our PE program will look like? I wouldn't want to build space for PE to find out that we have changed the way that we give credit, and we don't need that space, because I'm trying to balance the activity center versus educational programming that isn't activity center-driven. And I do acknowledge that the activity center does have an educational component. So, those are my kind of 30,000-foot thoughts.
Absolutely, and that's the kind of feedback that we are looking for right now. You know, we wanted to make sure that we had this in a public forum to sort of have that discussion. Those are certainly some data points that we can work to come back with you on. I think that that, you definitely touched on some points that perhaps I didn't hit as hard here, but that we do need to really, we have a lot of programming discussions going on right now around the birth to grade five and secondary study, and we feel that that extra timeline will allow us to incorporate some of those as well, but we'll certainly take in some of the items that you've requested and work to bring those back to you.
Susan, looking at the activity center from a slightly different perspective, I'm also interested in, you know, how much do we save by cutting it back from the original proposal? And if we do cut it back at this point, what opportunities are there in the future? Because, you know, one of the ways I look at it, we keep hearing discussion about, we have no land left, we have limited opportunities for adding on or remodeling, and I view this as an opportunity to have facilities for the next generation, maybe two generations of students, and I really don't want to be penny-wise and pound-foolish. I mean, I have to say, I'm actually very enthusiastic about the original five-court running track activity center, and, you know, I know there was pushback both ways at the last meeting, but I wouldn't, you know, at this point, there's been no discussion, there's been no vote, and I wouldn't want you guys prematurely overly cutting back on that either.
Certainly, we can take that back. I think one of the discussions that we've had offline was to say, what, you know, let's bring you more than one proposal, so that you can kind of weigh those against each other, so certainly can do that.
Yeah, I also want to be careful with how we throw around that number, because the reality is, we may put classrooms in the basement of that facility, and so now, all of a sudden, we're distorting or trying to separate out what's an activity center versus what's a classroom versus, you know, what's going to be used for another purpose. So, I think we have to be a little careful with how we think and talk about that space. It's not some appendage to the building, when really it is, but it may be used for classrooms all day long.
I would just add to some of Randy and Lenny's comments, in terms of programming study, our impetus for our entire facilities discussion is next generation study, but with that, what could be helpful, if this can be created, is a programming study with a translation guide, you know? Here's what programming looks like in the space that it is needed to provide the programming of our current system, but with next generation, this is the kind of programming need that we anticipate for the future. And just one example that I can think of, that we've presented, is touching on robotics, but engineering, Project Lead the Way, has been part of the district now for several years. What kind of programming needs are necessary for that particular model? If it continues to be a part of our program, is it viable? Does it need a different kind of space that looks more like a robotics classroom that now involves more students who may not be specifically enrolled in that activity, but would benefit from shop space, 3D printers, experimental space? And that may be true of our world language programs, that may be true of several other components that we're looking at for next generation.
You guys expanded the elementary scope, which is something we talked about. Do you have any specifics there, or is it sort of concept at this point?
I think we talked about adding more of the flexible spaces, as opposed, the percentage-wise, I don't have those numbers, I can't tell you, but I know that it was as opposed to, you know, rather than X, we wanted 2X or something in terms of the number of flexible space kinds of opportunities that we had, and then we also talked about what would it take to perhaps at a couple of the schools, I believe it's Highlands and Cornelia, which ironically, we're just talking about with enrollment, looking at how could we build large group spaces, whether it's a whole other gym, what size of a gym, what does that, could accommodate physical education, but could it also be something else with some other large group spaces at those twos? That was what the additional discussions that we've had since October 6th have been about? Is that, I don't know if anybody else has something else?
That'd be correct, that'd be correct, and we're still getting details on that. So, I think, again, we're talking a lot around numbers here, and it's, that's why we wanted to have time to dial it in better, I think we'll be in a better position from a programming standpoint as well. So, I think that's going to continue to help us define it, but I mean, we're also starting to see a trend form where, again, it says different types of space, that what we're not going to be locked into is, here's the program in 2018 or 19, because we really need to look at programming 2025. So, how do we make sure that we meet the immediate needs as well as the future needs and flexibility? And we're seeing that in the business world, and we're seeing it at post-secondary level, and as we look at new construction occurring throughout the United States in school facilities too. So, I think we're trying to incorporate that into our current buildings, which are much more locked to that classroom and hallway look, and less flexibility for space, but we'll be able to put more definition into this over the next month or so.
I know we're looking at this already, but in terms of, we talked about equity among the schools, looking at the population sizes of each school, so if you have a school that has 20% more students than any other school, you have to make sure that it's not, everybody gets the same gym if one has 20% more students. We want to make sure that the gym or the cafeteria can help house that. So, when I look at equity, I look at equity based on need.
The, one additional point, maybe now is not the appropriate time, but what we're looking at here is the 17th of November and the 15th of December, those are regular board meetings, and I'm wondering, do we need a workshop session possibly in addition to that? So, we don't have to answer that question now, but I just want to...
So, one of the agenda items at the end, it's just taking a look at our schedules for November, December, before we close out, including a possible board leadership retreat we had talked about, a day-long event, which would be incorporated in at that point.
Excellent.
But we're also looking, again, at reach out to the community, reaching out to staff so that they're aware of this as well. So, we do have a variety of events planned over the next two months, and I think, too, again, some of our discussions will complement very nicely what the city is doing with their vision and work. So, we'll keep both of them running forward.
Thank you, thank you, Susan. Next up, we have our leadership update. Rick?
I'll just take us a quick step. In 2014, as we began the year, we had some major initiatives that we really wanted to move forward on, and some specific actions, and just wanted to update the board and the community on our work. One was really to try to continue to work on the team building. This was really focusing on our work on professional learning communities, how everything was going to be done in much more of a collaborative spirit. We've done some great progress with that. We've also used a school climate survey, both on a staff and student side, or staff and parent side, to continue to find ways we can support our staff in their work going forward. We've also formed a next generation advisory team, which is another way of helping our staff continue to champion together the strategic plan. We've completed position statements, both on our race and culture, as well as personalized learning. The third one was moving forward with our power standards, common assessment and grading for learning, and our Department of Teaching and Learning continues to make strong progress along with our teaching staff, focusing on that assessment and really making sure we're, again, as we move forward, and we'll start seeing that in some of our course offerings going forward, they're tied to our standards. Secondary action plan, the board did approve those in June, and we're moving forward on all those, including all 20 of the pilot projects. The birth to grade five recommendations were accepted in July. The implementation team has begun their work, and we'll be reporting back to the board in January of the updates occurring there. We've done some resource alignment with our strategic plan, especially as our budget was done last spring. We're also looking at time as another big resource, that we're trying to align our time to our strategic plan. We've been working on staff wellness and workflow, we have initiative being supported by the Edina Ed Fund. Mark Wallace is championing a lot of that work, but we're also taking a look, again, with that next generation advisory team of how we can support some staff wellness initiatives. We've expanded our community volunteer program, and we're excited that we have two new players joining us in that arena, who will help champion that website forward and making that a better one-stop shop and more timely, both on the school side as well as on the community side. We've completed the first phase of the building project, as well as implemented the devaluation plan, and finally, started to work on some community safety and wellness initiative that being championed by our community education study, as well as doing some partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Edina. So, these are all 14 initiatives that tie directly back to our strategic plan. We are now starting to shape for 2015, and these, again, help us, give us a better direction with our strategic work, so I wanted to update everybody on that. We talked about coming back to the board with a gap plan, so we really do feel like this is the time for us to be very active in our equity work. Again, from a strategic standpoint, our desire is to narrow gaps between the highest and lowest performing students, making sure it's not racially or economically predictable, and been having discussions on this. We've had a major initiative, All for All, on this, and yet, we've, as a district, been challenged to close that gap. What we recognize as a district is that we're considering the achievement, access, and opportunity gaps closed, when there's no more than 5% difference in student performance on achievement measures and earned participation of educational programs. So, we're working hard, not only on this year, but especially as it relates to participation and access, we're making sure that as we start planning for the 15, 16-year, we're taking steps around this.
I'll ask Chad Schmidt to step in a little bit. Chad's been doing a lot of the research on some of the data work. Chad and Randy Smazl, as well as Mary Mannefield, have been out to all the sites, just going through the data with site leadership teams, talk a little bit about some of the work that's being done, and ask Chad if he can kind of step into this next slide.
Thank you, Rick. One of the ways we look at exploring gaps is really through some of the achievement measures that we have. So, all of our students take, all of our students, grades one through nine, take the MAP, Math and Reading Test, so that's one area of assessment results that we can look at. We also look at MCA, and that's grades three through eight, plus once in high school. And then, explore and plan tests have been in grades eight and grades 10 the last couple of years. This year, grade 11 students will also be taking the ACT. So, it's just, it's a variety of achievement measures that allow us to take a look and say, how are different student group performing? We also think it's important around the access and opportunity gaps that we look at some We also think it's important around the access and opportunity gaps that we look at some of our educational programs, and some of those listed on the screen there. You see Gifted and Talented, Special Education, English Learner, things such as discipline and suspension. What are rates, discipline and suspension rates by student group? Do we see differences there? Participation in student leadership activities, athletics, fine arts, et cetera. So looking at it from not just an achievement perspective, but also an access and opportunity perspective. The five central gap areas, this comes from the work of Eric Mahmood and Jeffrey Hassan and the African-American Leadership Council, or Forum, I think it is. And they identified five central gap areas. And so we use these gap areas when we created the All for All Plan as ways to kind of hang our recommendations together. So areas to address belief gap, leadership gap, preparation gap, teaching and learning gap, and the time gap. And we have recommendations in all of these areas. We presented this All for All Plan to the board in April of 2013, and then gave an update earlier this summer.
We made a commitment as a leadership team to take a priority, thank you Chad, around the thought that where we really need to focus our efforts is becoming more systemic in some of our work, especially in the use of common formative assessment. This is that checking of when we set expectations of teachers on a regular basis, classroom teachers, school sites, teams of teachers, step in and say, you know, how successful was the student in their learning, especially as it lines with the standards, and then working with their partners, their collaborative teams, to give feedback and then make necessary changes in instructions so those students will be experiencing success. We also need to have the students aware of how they're performing so that they can own and be engaged in that learning as well. So this has been our priority discussions and some of the work that we've been working on at a leadership level. This, again, is information that we shared in the, at the September meeting, where it does identify the gap, especially as it relates to our students, our black students, as well as our free and reduced students. This is off the MCA reading trends. Similar in the math area, these are some of the discussions, again, that we break it down by school and by grade level to help teachers see how this and how site leadership teams can respond. Our areas of action right now as we go forward is, one is that as a leadership team, this is our number-one priority. So as we are meeting, at every meeting and in our two-hour monthly meeting, we're taking training and taking assessment, working collegially to try to resolve and make this a priority. We're going out to our sites, really working with our teams, making sure that All for All Action Plan that the board reviewed in August of this summer are implemented. Again, really helping grow the formative assessment to guide the instructional changes, ongoing discussions on a weekly basis at the site levels, and then making sure that if we do need some more resources, both internal and external, that we can find ways to either reauthorize some of the resources we're using, or come back and say to the board that there are some specific things that we could see benefiting to help in this gap effort. Randy Smazl, Director of Teaching and Learning, has been very involved with helping shift some of the work that's occurring in the area of teaching and learning. And Randy, I don't know if you have some comments or thoughts of how your team is attacking this as well?
So as Rick mentioned, one of the strategies around building common formative assessments ensures that we have a dynamic feedback loop that provides feedback to the teachers as well as to the students. How are we doing on the learning targets? Are we achieving the learning targets? And if not, what do we do about those? So some of our short-term work is supporting, building, supporting staff, and helping to build formative assessments, but more importantly, to interpret the data from formative assessments and use that data to change instruction. That's also a major design element in our teacher evaluation framework, is the expectation that teachers will use formative assessments to impact their instruction. That's good quality instructional practice. So it's embedded in the teacher evaluation framework. And then, as Rick was mentioning earlier, at a macro scale, being clear on what the standards are in terms of learning and those articulated to students, and then having common summative assessments in place to measure whether or not that guaranteed viable curriculum is happening as a system. So power standards, common summative assessments, and then the more dynamic formative assessment is really the meat and potatoes of the teaching and learning work.
Before I go, any questions on the gap work that we're doing?
No, I think we've talked about it before, is just looking at growth as well. The averages kind of muck things up a little bit. And so I know that there are students in all our groups that have shown growth. They may or may not have hit our power standards yet, but if they're showing growth over time, I think that's something we need to find out what's working with those students. And for those that aren't, you know, it might be different strategies for those kids. And if we average them out, you lose that. So we've, I know you're doing that.
And one of the, and I know Chad will jump in here too, but one of the elements we do look at is MAP data, which is great at showing growth. And so we know that if a student is, for example, a grade level below, we're looking at 150% growth over two years to get back to grade level. So certainly proficiency, all students hitting that bar and meeting that minimum level proficiency is important. And absolutely, growth is another critical factor. And so I think Chad can speak to that.
Yeah, that's really, so as we've been out visiting the schools in the last couple of weeks, one of the things we've been looking at is the assessment results are just an opening to a conversation about student needs and how students are performing long-term. And ultimately, part of that conversation is what kind of growth are they making over time? And if they're below grade level now, but making growth towards getting to grade level, then that's what we want to see. And if they're not, then what are we doing that we need to change that might help them move in a different direction?
Thanks.
I'm going to shift us to our staff development report. This is an action item later in the evening. I'll ask Randy Smazl, who oversees this work at administrative level, to jump in and share a few comments about the report.
So I think about a month ago, we talked about the World's Best Workforce Report and Legislation. And the original intent would be that the staff development report would be phased out and would be incorporated into World's Best Workforce. But there's still some lingering of this report that needs to occur for this last school year. Some of the major elements in that report, and this is, basically, this is a template provided by MDE. And we've had some interesting things happen with this template in the past week. We've worked with two programmers at MDE, and we're not the only district who has been working on this to help the report show up in a consistent way. And basically, in the report, we have to enter in the student achievement goal, the district staff development goal, and the building staff development goal. And we're looking for alignment between what the buildings are doing and what the district has organized as a district-wide staff development goal. Building sites, enter in their findings, the impact on instruction and student learning, and then articulate whether or not this is a direction that they plan to continue for next year. Next slide. So this slide indicates the goals that were in place for 1314 at a district-wide level. So staff, understanding the big ideas of professional learning communities. It's a focus on learning versus teaching, which is really a cultural shift in how we do our work. It's growing the collaborative culture, so setting team structures up so that staff can collaborate with each other, and then really maintaining a focus on results and whether, and the level to which students are learning. So those are the three big ideas of PLCs. Staff, knowing and understanding these four key questions of professional learning communities. What do we want students to know and be able to do? How are we going to know that they have learned it? And what are we going to do if they haven't learned it or they're learning it faster than other students? So part of the intervention response. Staff continuing to learn together about social and racial justice, and how that plays a role in the student experience inside of schools. And engaging courageous conversations around race and racism and whiteness in terms of our curriculum and our pedagogy, so ongoing training around that. And then lastly, taking time and participating and examining student performance and student work. We've had teachers that pull out student work, performance assessments, essays, written work, and they score that work independently first, and then they look at that work across all of the teachers on the team and see how consistently they're scoring from teacher to teacher. So it's a way of developing iterative reliability between the teachers. So that's just one example, but one of the focuses being around how we examine student performance and student learning. So those in general are, were our big four staff development goals district-wide last year, and then I think there's one more slide, Rick. So these were some key findings that were entered from sites into the report. Broadly, teachers were organized in professional learning communities, and they met on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. Most met on a weekly basis, and we're trying to continue to provide structure and time to support that. There's an increased use of formative assessment across the system, and we want to continue to grow that, because that is a very powerful feedback loop, as we described earlier, for students and for staff. An increased number of students participating in student leadership opportunities was reported by our middle schools. More focus placed on strategies for all, especially with a lens toward our EL students. More personalized interventions for students have been developed, and that will continue to grow, will continue to grow that. Over 95% of our staff have now participated in Beyond Diversity Training, and increase in confidence among staff, which is common in the literature when staff are working in professional learning communities, and that continues to grow, and they have time to collaborate with each other. Confidence amongst the staff continues to grow and go up. So that was being reported by several sites.
Also want to touch, questions on Randy on staff development? Otherwise, I'm going to shift our attention back to the strategic work. One of the areas that, our final area of major study, is the Community Education Services Improvement Plan that they are moving forward with, and ask Val Burke to step up and just give us a quick flyover. This is a work in progress. I know the District Community Education Advisory Council has also been working in this arena.
Just quickly, working with Dennis Cheesebrow, the purpose of the plan is really to better align our services along with the next-genner work, so we can really leverage resources from all the different areas to the best ability. It's a three-year department improvement plan. The structure aligns our programs and services to make it a high-quality, efficient, and effective manner for both the department and the district. It's three phases. We'll begin in November with a large team of about 20, including some of my fellow cabinet members or lead team members, as well as community, as well as some of our staff. We'll do a large, similarly to most of the program studies, do kind of a large environmental scan, see what's best practices, what's going on around the state, internationally and nationally. In probably January or February, do more of a staff-focused retreat. We'll be using sort of a nine quadrant way that we'll work with Dennis on trying to figure out what exactly where our programs and services are strong, what our programs and practices are, what we need more of, what we need less of. And then we'll come back to another small, larger team, or another more specific strategy team to kind of make recommendations, and then we'll come to you in May with what we have discovered during our year-long journey. Teamworks has put together kind of a three-phase just philosophy on where community education programs sort of sit in districts. They move from a silo type all the way to a fully integrated. We would define ourselves currently as a strong B. We're aligned, we work strategically well together, and integrate services and resources. And probably moving just slightly from a B to the beginning of a C, which really, when we look around the state of Minnesota and even our metro area, it's really groundbreaking work, because really, again, it's really about making sure that every staff in our system is utilized fully, and we leverage each resource. So, I don't know, Lisa, you heard the presentation? I don't know if you, you know, but essentially, it's just, it's a process that we believe is going to move us forward. We're just finishing our three-year strategic plan from when I started, and so the timing is great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Val. Remind board again of our strategic advancement, some of the major initiatives that we're doing, and I think I will just hit on those. Leadership updates, we've been doing some partnering work with Hopkins and the City of Edina, so we've got some intentional initiatives going on with both of those partners of the district. We've done some new hiring in community education. Our 2015-16 calendar task force has met, starting to frame up possible proposals. We'll be coming back to the board in November and December. And then we have got studies going underway with both Gifted and Talented. We'll soon be moving on that, as well as a guidance and counseling study. So those all line back to our major strategic work. Lots of things happening. All of them are being timed out so that we can make sure we align with the work that we can accomplish, and yet still, when it gets down to it, our focus really has to make sure that we're still high on our priority of All for All.
Any questions?
So the list of things that's going on is quite amazing. I mean, it keeps going on and on and on, page after page. So I sort of hate to say this, because it might add to your list, but I wonder whether it makes any sense for the board as a whole, and I hate to volunteer my peers here, to sit through the Beyond Diversity or Courageous Conversations programs that we have our staff going through.
We can, so we've got some things that we're going to talk about as it relates to race and cultural training opportunities. Shrocky Holly's going to be back in the community in, I believe, February, so we might be looking at a joint training with Hopkins. I think the training year talking about letting it be great. We've also got some inventory. We've got some staff going on, taking some inventory training that will also, might be another tool. So we've got three or four different opportunities that, as we move into 2015, that we'll want to put some focus on to help the board grow in their work as well.
And, you know, it's not designated for the board, but it's given to staff, and it's something that a board member could choose to attend, that you could let us know. Maybe that's an easier way if that's not disruptive.
We've had some board members take advantage of that, so we'll be a little more direct and provide that in our weekly communications. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Rick. Under our consent agenda, can I motion to bring that to the floor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To bring up our consent agenda, Dr. Dressen, could you please walk us through?
I certainly can. We've got our personnel recommendations. We have expenditures payable for October 2014. We have added legal counsel, an additional legal counsel, just as we prepare for the bond, possible bond and construction. We've added a council that specializes in that field, that we've used it in the past, and just need to add that as another possibility. Nursing care contract, again, is something that we will use as necessary. This is just formalizing, again, something that annually occurs. Rates of pay for student health, we need to make that adjustment after we've had the change at the legislative level with minimum wage. We've got some student teaching agreements. We do have a friendly amendment if the board, with the Augsburg, is it Augsburg?
Augustana.
Excuse me, Augustana. It has the wrong date in there. It has it from 2007, '09, should be 2014, '15, obviously. So 2014, '16, I should say, 2014, '16 is the correction for Augustana, and then also University of North Dakota. We've got another growing us, or helping us grow with a subcontract agreement, again, a standard recommendation for action, and then some commendations, and the generous gifts from our community. And with that, that would conclude the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions, comments, or items anybody would like removed from the consent agenda? I've got a background for Margot. We're seeing more of these contracts. Is that a shift, or is it, is it state law? Or why are we seeing some of these small, what I would call a small contract, like with the nursing care or with educational services? Are these, I don't remember seeing these in the past.
They have not been. And we just felt it's, when it's a contracted issue, we just felt to put it in the consent agenda for formal approval.
Okay.
So it's been something administratively, we've taken on ourselves in our discussions. We just felt it's wise to, when it's an agreement between us and another organization, we really should take board approval. But we could certainly look at policy around that as well.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a preference either way. I just was curious if it was, if it was internal choice or a shift in state law or something that's driving that?
It's not a shift in state law. Our policy now has contracts 50,000 and above. But at any point in time, if we feel the board should be aware, we certainly can bring something forward.
Yeah, and I don't have a strong feeling either way, just curious for the shift. The other thought I had was, does it make sense sometimes to say, we estimate the budget for this over the school year to be, you know, five grand? for this over the school year to be, you know, five grand or 50 grand, or, not trying to get commitment, but more understand what's the impact, you know? When it's an hourly rate, you don't have a sense of if we're spending $10,000 or $100,000, yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the slight modification of the date, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Next up, we're on to our budget adjustments. We already had a presentation this evening. Can I have a motion to bring that up to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the 13-14 budget adjustments. Any additional background, Margot, comments or questions for anybody?
Just as was reported in the audit report, this is as a result of the coding change for the technology levy, and that is the only change. Normally, we wouldn't adjust the prior-year budget, but in order to have the budget reflect the audit, we have to make this change. And we did review it at Finance and Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Margot. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the budget adjustments to reflect the audit for 13-14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have acceptance of the financial statements for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the financial statements for year ended June 30th, 2014. Any discussion, questions, comments? We heard a presentation this evening. All those in favor of approving that as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have employee health insurance renewal. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Margot, background, please.
We bid employee health insurance last year. We were required to bid again this year due to the Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability Act that passed last spring, and that was a very competitive process, and I'm happy to report that we have recommended a 0% increase with the current carrier, Blue Cross Blue Shield. And that will be for one year, and then we will go out for bid again next year, so that we are also in alignment with teachers' group who are on the state insurance plan.
Excellent.
This did go through insurance committee, and Sarah is our board rep, which she said.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the employee health insurance renewal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have long-term life and disability renewal. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, also no change here. A little, any background, Margot?
Oh, it was just time to go out for bid again for life and LTD, and happy to report 0% change, no change in benefit. It is a change in carrier to Madison National Life, which is also a good company, so, good company. We did have a number of them bid. Our most recent two companies that the district had, has had, did not submit a bid. But again, 0%, same coverage.
Discussion, questions? All those in favor of approving employee life and long-term disability insurance rates, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is our annual report on professional learning. Can I have a motion to bring that one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the annual report on professional learning for 14-15, I think, right?
13-14.
13-14?
13-14.
Oh, it is 13-14.
So we're reporting on learning for last year, professional learning for last year.
Thanks for that clarification. Any discussion?
I know that you mentioned when you were giving the presentation that you'd had some problems with the online form, so those last, like, 15 pages that just seemed, that was the same page over and over and over again, am I assuming that that was part of that issue?
That, that's one of our issues. So Kathy, we worked with two programmers at MDE to try to resolve several issues that we were having. So one is the redundancy of the pages when it prints. So in that first district section, pages eight through 14 are out, and it stops at page seven, but it continued to print that. We're also missing some information about student learning and impact on teacher practice on page four, and so we may have to just simply re-enter that information. Just kind of overall, a major focus for professional learning last year was around PLC training, around racial equity training. In terms of PLC work, it was about clarity on what we want students to learn, what mastery is going to look like, and then how we intervene when learning happens at a rate slower or faster than what we expect. There is detailed student achievement data and detailed school goals also on our World's Best Workforce website, which is connected under the Academics tab on our Edina Public Schools webpage, if folks in the community are interested in seeing additional information about our student achievement. And then another piece that wasn't mentioned in the report but is required for state reporting is that about 2% of our general ed revenue is spent on staff development as a school district.
And so the more detailed statistical analysis that we're used to seeing in this report, where the school sets a goal and then says whether we met it or not, that's all migrating to the World's Best Workforce report, and so we'll find that other parts on the web and not on this report this year.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion? It also did, this page 336, I was noticing those numbers look funny, but I see you provided a replacement for that. Can we have that just inserted by an amendment? Can I have an amendment to insert that?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to replace page 336 with the printed-out page we have with us to correct some missing errors, I guess, on that. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving and inserting?
I don't know, it's page six of 14 that says.
339.
Bandages paper.
All right.
A little dyslexia going on late at night here. 339, that is correct, six of 14. All those in favor of inserting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That has been amended. Any additional discussion about the annual report on professional learning?
So the, this, will the new system become more consistent? Because some of these, they're essentially the same goal, but they're worded differently, and they have different outcomes, and it, it's hard to keep track of whether it met the goal or not in this form.
So our, our shift will be to the World's Best Workforce reporting format, and so we're completing this format for this year, but we hope that, as we continue toward that in the future, that we believe that reporting format and structure provides additional clarity around the goals, around the student achievement, and then the actions at the sites.
Thanks.
And that's also, also the desire of Department of Education, that they want to move away from this and go to the World's Best Workforce approach, and we're just in that transition, and they don't have the support necessary to help districts who are being timely in the response, and that's where we're challenged a little bit.
Thanks, Randy. Additional discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the annual report on professional learning for 13-14 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have a motion to approve our amended student policies, 501, 503, 504, 505, and 507. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We've seen these all before. Any major or minor changes anybody'd like to point out that have been made?
Go ahead. This one there. In policy 504 and 505, in the ending where it shows statutes and case law that support the policy, those two have been updated with some new case law that we pulled in from the MSBA, the school board website. And that would be the extent of the new thing since you last saw it.
Excellent. Any additional discussions?
So on 504, too, we also addressed body markings such as tattoos to be included in the student dress and appearance policy. So it's just, it's been a practice of the district around, and we haven't had a big problem with it, but this is kind of the trend right now, is to call, call out body markings. So if there's inappropriate body markings, that we'd have to have the student cover it just like we would for a T-shirt or anything else.
Thanks for pointing that out, Rick. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the 500 series policies as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're on to our discussion, next-generation facilities plan. Is this, is there anything in addition to what we've previously seen?
Not really. It just breaks it down that we're in the phase one, phase two, and it kind of spells that out. It was very well-covered by Susan in her report, and it is going to be a point of ongoing discussion, but we felt like we needed to advance it formally, so that's why we brought to a discussion of the board, so that we moved to that next phase, because the task force work was done, and we kind of wanted to continue that process, and wanted the board to be supportive of it. And, you know, one of the big things is that we are looking at a later spring possible vote, if we would determine it, but would not for sure be a March 2015 vote.
And the goal, then, would be to have this as a motion for the next meeting.
That's correct.
Formal motion, okay?
27, I had it moved, but 26.
Any questions or comments?
27, I had it coming. 26.
Again, we're going to continue to seek additional input from the community, the staff, and then also a board discussion before we get to a point where we would then move forward to a resolution as it relates to a possible referendum, which I think is officially declared phase three.
I would just, you know, comment, since the task force representatives came to the workshop rather than to this meeting, I think it's worth noting what a great job they did, both at the six meetings and in their presentation to us. Appreciated people coming today to speak about it. And our discussion about this has been, as I think it needs to be, very matter-of-fact and sober, but I think it's also important to communicate, you know, at least I, for one, feel a great deal of excitement about this. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for the district and the community, and, you know, I think we need to talk through it, you know, again, in a careful, appropriate way, but it's time to start communicating some of this excitement that, that I felt at the task force meetings. I think there's some really great things to accomplish, and I'm very glad we're moving forward with it.
Thank you. And I, I do think one of the things we learned on the task force, they appreciated how it's tied to the vision, and that we really do need to help our community. I think there's direct talk of saying, even help us understand personalized learning, because we are making this shift, so we have to keep this all tied together. This is really a learning initiative around bricks and mortar, but it's really a learning initiative. So I appreciate that, David.
Any comments or thoughts on the phase two document? Seeing none, we'll move on. Additional 500 series policies?
I'm going to make some comments if I can.
Again, very routine committee meets Wednesday?
Wednesday? No. We do. The 512, just, there's relatively small notes through most of these. 512 is adding language in Section 1 to align with the district mission, you specifically calling that out. And then just a small adjustment in Section 2, Paragraph B, regarding alignment with the expression of district views rather than district policies. 517, minor language clarification throughout. 519, the place where we had the lengthiest discussion was in Section 3, Paragraph C, just clarification of language from statute. There's statute language that was a little bit difficult to discern, so we made some amendments there just for clarification. No particular notes from our last policy meeting on 520. 526, if anyone has comments, you know, with this or any of them, we're glad to take them back to the policy committee. 526 will have some further outside review, is what we recommended with Troy Stein, just to get some input from actual practice, and then take a look at the appendix. And 527, just minor language and cleanup.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? We have some information items, leadership update, committee reports.
Just a couple items. One is the district is just starting to explore, expanding. We've historically been, had a chemical health coordinator, and it's been a successful role for us, and that's an important role for us. We've done some funding shifts and challenges because of that, but we're really now talked at the Teaching and Learning Committee about the possibility of having a mental health, excuse me, a mental health and wellness initiative around more complete, full-service of supporting students socially, emotionally, and so we'll be exploring that as a district over the next months, and coming back to the board with an approach that we're considering for discussion and in action at the board level, on a more of a full-service approach to how we can support our young people and their families as they continue to grow, learn, and prepare for their future. So we're kind of excited about this, but it's much more of a full service rather than just focusing on chemical health, working with possible outside providers. We have had some various response situations as it relates to safety over the past month, and I appreciate the strong work of our administration and staff, the response of students and families around each of these incidents, and the strong work out of our communications department to keep everybody in the loop as we've dealt with these. That crisis team and control team, that really do all the coordination work, have been meeting over the past month, and we have our large group meeting tomorrow morning where we just, again, start doing tabletop discussions of the what-ifs and how we can be responsive to the various things that can occur, including Ebola, which is something that, again, we're working with Department of Education, State Department of Health, and our Bloomington Public Health, just on making sure we're prepared for all situations as a school district going forward. And then the board, we've talked previously about a possible full-day retreat of board and leadership around some of the topics that we're dealing with right now, just making sure we have plenty of time to process, possibly looking at an end of November, early December date. And we'll probably get some ideas out, but if you have specific ideas of something around that, we'd like to make it a better part of a day, as to what we had talked about, if that's still the right feel to it. Then we'll start looking at a team of board members and administrators to work with a consultant to bring it together. We wanted to make it real. I think we've got plenty going on so that we can do the learning while we're also moving forward some of our strategic work and governance and management work.
Any other additional items? Committee reports, comments, questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.